All right, folks, it's seven o'clock, you're gonna call a meeting to order.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, there is no comma after "one nation."
I'm going to motion to declare an open meeting.
I will move.
A second? Move second to declare open meeting in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, do we have a new notification of the Open Meetings Act in the back?
Yes.
That's on the door back here. Full call, Chance, yep, Kate, Wyatt.
Here.
Self's here, Melissa.
Yes.
Justin's excused. Number seven, approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, approve the agenda in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, then we'll move on to our discussion items starting number eight, facility committee share.
Okay, had two site visits since we last met, want to give, I think, our committee members an opportunity to engage with one another in the full, in the whole room and with the board on just feelings about that visit. Anything you noticed, anything surprising, anything that was, okay, this was, this was nice, this would be necessary, this wouldn't be necessary. Just how you, how you felt about that, essentially, so I think maybe just stand and, and share, no particular order. Might be a short meeting.
So how many of you went to Laurel? I was unable to go with work.
Seventeen.
So quite a few of you.
We had a, a good group, yes Bob, I mean Bob's done these for quite a while and he was impressed when we pulled up in a full-size motor coach.
Do I, 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 you can hear me, I was surprised that they had a lot of storage, but it still looked like in Laurel that they would have, could have used twice as much storage as what they got, as usual, or else they don't know how to pack in there very good.
I thought the, like, the wood shop area Laurel was incredible.
Yeah.
Just how much, how big it was and how much room they had, and the FCS room, the science rooms, it was just, really, they did everything new except their gyms, I think, at Laurel, and yeah, it was, it was, it was pretty neat.
I was impressed a lot with the size, the size of the rooms, the size of the hallways, and, and the renovations that, that Laurel had. It was just really pretty nice, gives the kids a lot more than what we have.
So based on what you saw, you would put classroom size up there on priority, how big and how spacious room for storage, things like that?
Yeah.
Put that at the top of the priority list?
Depending on the classroom and what you were doing.
They didn't show us like a social studies classroom, because they weren't real.
Pretty standard.
Standard.
Did you guys check out the science room, the science lab?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had like mobile desks in there, right? Mobile stations.
Yeah.
That, we maybe thought their ag room was too small, didn't, right, was that the one that was maybe on the small end of things?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it looks about that, the other side.
Yeah.
I thought the communications in the Laurel system, as far as, as well as Wayne, how they communicated from room to room, so if there was something happening inside the school, it could, a teacher just could get on the phone and kind of communicate what's going on, so I thought they put some good thought into that. It was kind of impressive, the commentary when you first walked into the building. Wayne had, how they went about with their weatherproofing of the windows. Hundred and seventy mile per hour winds.
That's current building code?
Yeah.
When you build classrooms, you have to have a storm shelter, they can hold five square foot per occupant of whatever the new occupant room that you add. So you wouldn't, by code, if you did some classroom additions to this facility, it wouldn't be the whole school occupancy, it would be if I had four classrooms, one of the four, roughly twenty-five percent of your classrooms, is large enough to accommodate all of the added occupancy. So that was, that is something you would have to do if you do classrooms.
One, one or more of our classrooms would have to be storm, designated storm shelter.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So at, at, at Wayne, you know, because Wayne Elementary, that was pure new construction, Laurel was a mix of new and massive amounts of renovation, but at, yes, at Wayne, they had, one of the, the doors were like vault doors, you know, they're, they're sheltered.
Yeah.
The rooms that were designated as shelters.
Yeah, from metal, yeah. The other thing I kind of stood out was that they, they put some type of vinyl on the windows to be, be resistive, it was clear, so they couldn't get shot out as, as easily. So, so, that's always been my, something on my mind is why lock the doors, if they can just blow out the windows and unlock them, so I thought that was something to keep in mind.
Along with what Kevin said about the egg, egg part, they, they all had their individual stations for their different types of, of shot needs, and then they had a room for the computers that was completely enclosed, so you could do what you wanted to, and there's no dust, no dirt, no, nothing getting in there. That was kind of nice.
They had that big storage room for all their lumbered materials, I think a forklifter or speed loader could go in and put stuff up on those shelves.
And with that, with the, where he could, you could have it in the classroom, like you said, in the classroom, but he also had a glass, so he could see if somebody was doing a project, he could see a proj, you know, he wouldn't have to be in both rooms.
In Wayne, some of the, the door, new construction, they had it set up so there was a door in between classrooms, so if one teacher had to leave, they could, could call the attention of the next door teacher, and they could watch over, you know, for a second or two while they had to leave. Just a join and made them all connected, and you could move in between rooms without everyone in the hallway you had to.
I think the lunchroom at Laurel was really impressive, too. Just the space and the...
The walk-in cooler and freezer for half a bean.
And their ki, their kitchen was massive, and they could, they could dual-serve elementary, so they didn't share a space. Our space is half of one of their two spaces, they have two spaces, each of them are twice the size of our space. So an advantage is you could potentially feed kids faster, we wouldn't need an hour and a half window of opportunity to feed all our kids. So more, more classroom instruction time, what have you, but, but I don't know that we're necessarily looking at, at cafeteria space, but that was very impressive. They were very proud of that, for sure.
And the only other factor for Laurel is they are still anticipating at some point in the future, there's no hard date, but their middle school is still in coal rage. And their, their design anticipates at some point moving the kids six, seven, eight, back to the campus, so they potentially absorb that, still have the kitchen, the serving space, so it is a facility that's designed with the eventual growth in mind.
The whole K-12, pre-K-12 campus, because right now they're pre-K five and then nine twelve.
Right.
In, in Laurel.
How many gyms are in that school in Laurel, just to...
Two, with a multipurpose room that is their storm shelter, and they also have wrestling mats, so they use the multipurpose. For indoor recess for the elementary, because it has more, it doesn't have the wood floor, it has the elastic system, which is like the indoor court. You could throw indoor shot on that as well, wrestling practice and like that, so, but it's also their storm shelter.
Like their, their weight room and their, every, they're allowing to be open for the public, how are they controlling access to that?
It's a card swipe?
Card swipe.
Certain hours of the day.
So it'd be like either key fob or card swipe, certain hours a day, non-school instruction time, so before school, after school.
Same with the library.
And the library is their community library as well, and that has been for years, before this construction.
So they just give anybody, maybe instead of a card, a card?
No, I think there's fee.
A membership fee?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And of course, there's surveillance, you have, you have, you surveil every square inch of that space, you know, so you've got pretty good security, and they've got it set up where you, you know, you have access into the weight room and a hallway, but nowhere further, restrooms, you know, so you don't worry too much about having your building open until whatever hours you'd want to set, you know, for the community to use it.
It's all done in the software, you can program in the software per card, the timeframe that it works, so, middle of the day, I could have a card and try it and I wouldn't get it.
They don't operate any other amenities though to the public, do they, or they just the gym and library, they don't have a daycare and anything like that, like we're talking?
No.
Okay.
They do have a daycare in the community that the school...
The, the school helps with some transportation and the feet of...
But not onsite, though?
Not onsite, daycare's not onsite, but they're...
They have somebody else run that.
We're in, in cooperation with the school.
Yeah, the city drove that process, it happened shortly after the school bond passed that the city started working on getting the daycare going.
Natural light in the, in our elementary classrooms, it made me appreciate that a little more.
Laurel had some classrooms that no outside windows at all, and it was like second grade.
Yeah. So I, I would like, I like the way we do the light out there, if, if it's possible, but just a little different, I guess.
That was one nice thing with the Wayne, in the new design and the architecture and the lighting and the ceiling and the walls, it was pretty neat, the way that was set up. Really made you want to not leave, but come.
Advantages obviously to building new than...
Yes, that's the one thing, building new.
Yeah.
It really can do a lot of things.
Project would be, you know, maybe fifty-fifty-ish, whatever, you know, but, but they can do some pretty amazing things with fifty or fifty-plus year old existing facilities.
You could put something over the windows, so you can see out, but people can't see in, right?
Kind of, if you're talking like near glass, if you turn your lights on like this, though, it defeats some of that, you have to keep the interior a little darker, which with sunlight being as bright as it is, on a bright sunny day, it might function that way, but sometimes if you get too bright on the interior, it'll defeat that.
I think it was Laurel that had, they suggested that they would put blindset, you could go from the bottom up, because they had nice lovely windows, but sometimes it's distracting to young minds. So that's the only thing that they were suggesting to do, they liked the windows, but sometimes you have to guard them. Bus driver was good.
Nice to say. So we hope, you know, folks, we hope to go on, provide multiple more opportunities at, at Bob's recommendation, kind of knows what we're thinking about and would know where some, some good spots and sites would be for us, I mentioned to you, we'd love to get you over to Summerlin, right, and see more than just the gym, for those of you that have been there, you probably have seen the gym, but to see their learning spaces and such, our motor coach right now is getting his routine maintenance, and so if we get that back, I maybe mention to you this Friday, the superintendent is available and would love to have us a late afternoon, four-ish, on Friday, Friday's maybe not great, but just to scoot over there, we're there for an hour, maybe hour and a half, scoot back here, back home by seven on a Friday, wouldn't have to be the motor coach, you're gonna hope to have that back by then, so I will, I will let you know, hopefully tomorrow, if, hey, climb aboard, we're gonna leave four o'clock Friday, just hustle down to Summerlin, but beyond that, I think we'll be taking recommendations from Bob on, I think you'd really enjoy if you went and saw this, or this or this, and, and I don't know, Bob, maybe you can share what, what would be, what about will that window close where you'd say, okay, our, our site visits are probably, you know, maybe up till September, October, November, I don't know.
By the time we are ready to, when we have a CM on board and we want to start in earnest the regularly scheduled meetings, so I think we'll get into this as I get number nine and talk about next steps, but I had given kind of an outline of how I run community group processes, generally six meetings. Meeting number one is facility tours, and it doesn't have to be a single meeting, but it's, I need you to see what you have locally first, and I need you to see what other comparable school districts are doing. So if that is, you know, two or three more visits over the course of the next month or two, that's fine. Meeting number two then, just as you heard some questions from the school board, it's going to be the brainstorming, you know, I'm Santa Claus and I just want your Christmas list. What did you see, what do you want to have for ideas for your school, right? We're gonna break into small groups, we're gonna have you brainstorm those things, we're gonna generate a list, the next step after that is we're gonna start ranking. So not everybody's gonna have the same priorities, some of you talk very strongly about, oh, I really love the ag shop that Laurel had, I really like these elements, other people talked about natural light, some people talked about safety, right, everybody's gonna have different levels of what do you feel is important, but we will use a ranking system that will let you anonymously, if you will, give your own priorities, and that's something that then we share back out to the full group, so you can see what are the things that are very important, while money is no object. We take those ideas architecturally, we generate results, we work with a construction manager at that point to start putting dollars and cents to it, so we have, essentially by the third meeting, hopefully we're looking at those rankings and we're looking at some solutions. We want to start introducing money as the next step, and then we have you re-rank it, because it's one thing to just say, I want a giant shop, but depending on what you tell me you want in that shop, do you want to pull a combine in, or do you just want to have, you know, wood shop, welding, things like that? It can fluctuate what I plan in and what we have a construction manager price, but we start putting money in as a reality and we re-rank it again, and we see where things fall. We also have a, a future meeting, probably the fourth meeting, a fiscal agent, somebody who can look at your financials of the district, that would say you have X number of dollars of valuation, that equates to X number of pennies on your levy, so depending on the size or scope of what you want to try to build, it will have a fiscal impact, so we want them to educate the community group as to what is the potential, if you're looking at the bond, what is the potential impact, whether it's ten million, twenty million, thirty million, that's something you need to know. Ideally, what we want to get to then is not a one hundred percent everybody's happy, but a majority, maybe a supermajority consensus that here's a package that we feel as a community group, the broader community would support at fifty percent plus one, because in Nebraska, the threshold for a bond is fifty percent plus one for a successful bond election. When we get to that end and we kind of narrow in on, this is the scope, this is the amount, by the time we have the end of your process, we'd like to have the community group attend a school board meeting and make your presentation to say, here's all the steps we did. We started way back in, what was it, June of, well, some of us started earlier, but the community group, with your first tour. I mean, that's when you guys first officially started moving and looking at things, and just walk the school board through your same process, right? We toured facilities, we looked at our own facilities, we brainstormed ideas, we had a really big wish list, but after we started looking at the financials, here are the things that we really feel are important to the district, that we think your community will support, and we would recommend to you as the school board, this is a potential bond that you should proceed with. The full authority rests with your school board, they can take your recommendation, they could tweak it, they could adjust it, it doesn't usually deviate too broadly in the end, but usually it needs to be community-driven, it can't come from me, it can't come from the construction managers, it's your community, you know what's best, you know what you will support, and you know what will be useful for your community, hopefully for the next generation, because it's really generational when you guys do projects like this. It doesn't happen very often, so from a community group standpoint, that's kind of the next step.
I, I think I just propelled you into number nine without, without, the president kind of making it official, but, I mean, feel free to...
Keep going?
Yes, I think, have we exhausted your opportunity to provide some input, and obviously that will continue, it'll continue to be an ongoing conversation? Just, I think it's good to reflect before you get too far away from an experience, a, a site visit experience, but you want me to bring that RFP up now?
Yes, if you want to bring it up, I just, again, I would recommend all the committee members, take notes, give yourself little ideas, so that when we are ready, summer's a long time, I know you're all busy, you've got, whether your parents, grandparents, whatever, you're off doing things in the summer, it's great to be outdoors and active, but just jot some notes down, every time you go somewhere or you see something, or even if you're here in the school participating in something and you see, oh, hey, I see our science labs don't have something that I saw in Laurel, jot that down, because that's something that I would want you to bring back forth when we're doing the brainstorming session. We want all ideas on the table at that point. I fully anticipate you will exclude some of them, some of them might be great ideas, but it's just not something that's needed today with a, with a bond, okay? But there's no wrong answers when we start this process, so keep that in mind. Moving on to the school board, for you, the next step is, is my recommendation, giving a construction manager on board. So we spoke last time at our special board meeting with Derek Aldridge from Perry Law, and he kind of outlined the things that would need to happen. We had a resolution that needed to be adopted, so that was taken care of, but the next piece, and this is the RFP that we sent out for Wayne Community Schools, it's a hundred and fifty-six pages, and I will tell you only about the first fifteen pages really matter, because the rest of it is standard form documents that's either reciting state statutes, which is what you're following, or it's the example contract that the lawyers put in, so that the construction managers know, here's the basis of the CM at-risk contract, so liter, quite literally, a hundred of these pages is just the contract and the edits to the contract, and restating what the edits to the contract are, it's a lot of legal documentation, but it's important for this part of the process. So what Darren is quickly scrolling through right now is what you as a board need to focus on. It is the, essentially guts of what are we asking a construction manager at risk to participate in? So one of the first things you need to do is decide how are we going to evaluate our construction managers? State statutes give you criteria that you can follow, and then they leave you some percentages open that you can introduce yourself that relate to your locality. So in this example, this is what Wayne had weighted, so even the number one, state statute would tell you maybe that could be twenty percent, but usually it's weighted a little lower in my experience, because typically, anybody who responds should have significant financial resources, so we don't weigh that as heavy as, hey, just what is your ability of your personnel to be able to perform a job of the size that we are asking you to do, or a complexity? Some schools like Wayne were elements of ground-up new construction, there's elements where if you're looking at your facility and saying, I want to tear down part of a building, I maybe want to close the street and make connections, there's complexity, you've got occupied buildings, do they have experience of that, right? So we would want them to respond with information like that. It all has to add up to a hundred percent, but you get to pick those percentages, and after about number six in there, number seven is one that Derek had in there as one defined by the Wayne School Board, right, what's your proposed effort schedule for the project? Perry Law likes to have the construction managers propose an effort schedule, which lists out what are your anticipated staff, and how many hours do you anticipate they will devote, and he likes to lock them into that, so that whatever the scope is, you will never expend any more than those number of hours, okay? They don't necessarily give you a fee proposal, it's a quality-based selection typically, there is usually a pre-construction fee that's involved that's separate of their percentage-based fees, but this is something that you define, okay? Another thing that you need to decide as part of this process is just what is a general timeline? I think if you go back up towards the front, we had for Wayne some key dates, that's something that, that Derek would need to finish this RFP document, right here. So by the time we're ready to issue this, you know, we're gonna have a date where we say, hey, the RFP is out and it's issued for public consumption. We would have a pre-proposal conference shortly thereafter, usually within a week, week and a half of issuing the RFP, where we would have Derek and myself, team members, anybody who wants to come listen, we just lay out again, we invite any contractor interested, and we walk them through the RFP to make sure they understand what our expectations are and what they are providing as a response, and we allow them the opportunity to ask questions, we allow them the opportunity to walk your building, so that's the pre-proposal conference. The deadline is established in this document, it has to be a minimum of thirty days, well, the first one is receiving questions, July eighth, so we have a cutoff for them to be able to ask questions or clarifications, we have a deadline for issuing any addenda which would modify the RFP prior to the deadline, but here you can see, we issued it on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the deadline was July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's typically something they, they'll turn in an envelope, or they'll bring their information to your front office, or the superintendent's office if it's summer, whatever the case may be, we spell that out in the RFP, and then shortly thereafter, we like to get physical copies and digital copies, so we can distribute it to your selection committee. The selection committee is another thing that you as a school board need to decide upon, it can have members of the school board, it can have members of the administrative staff, it typically has the architect, it typically has community members, at least one uninterested party who is not affiliated with any potential CMs, that's just a taxpayer, and then it usually asks for another public member that is somewhat skilled in construction, could be any type, electricians, plumbers, framers, drywallers, just somebody who is in a construction-related field. You will define who gets to be on that selection committee as well, okay? Selection committee usually meets first to rank the proposals, once you've ranked the proposals, you, you have the option to make a selection or a recommendation as a selection committee just from the proposals themselves, typically it will move to an interview process. They will take the top two or three as a selection committee and then schedule interviews as well. Once the interviews are done, you basically re-rank everybody again, just like you did on the proposal process after the interviews. At that point, the selection committee makes a number one, number two, number three, they'll rank them, and they will come to the school board with their recommendation to say, we met, we interviewed all these contractors, contractor A is our selection and we recommend you enter negotiations. You're not obligated to sign a contract with company A, you start negotiations, as Derek said, if you can't come to a mutual agreement, you can go to the selection committee's number two, it's rare that that happens, but that's an opportunity you have, the school board makes the final selection. Once we have the CM on board, I would say that's when we earnestly start scheduling our community group meetings. Typically, I will run those every two weeks, sometimes we might have a three-week gap in there, if we need time for the construction manager to do their cost estimation, or we need to make modifications to the plans, but we'll typically try to get that going at a regular interval, once we have the CM on board. Again, the fiscal agent is always a part of that as well, school board can be a part of that, usually three at a time. We have some school boards that like to delegate it to say, we just want the same three members every time, and they can report back. More often than not, the school board will cycle, and you'll each pick different meetings, you know, and let's say one of the board members had a, hey, my, my kid's in a game this night, I want to switch, can I trade you knives? We don't necessarily care who shows up, but if you want to have members of your board have opportunity to see that process, you're more than welcome, but we do try to limit it to just three, so it's not something that we have to advertise as a public school board. The last thing you need to be able to, I guess, stipulate within this, two last things really, we need an idea of what the project's scope is, and we need an idea of what a general timeline might be, so what is your end goal, once this is out, to say, we are anticipating a spring bond election of twenty twenty-six, or a May bond election of twenty twenty-six, or a November bond? You have to define that at this stage for the CM. The other thing we have to define in this process to make sure that their contract covers the scope, you almost need to have essentially the wish list... you almost need to have essentially the wishlist stage for the CM. Because everything that we list as part of the program through the selection process, they are essentially authorized to participate and construct. You can scale it back, right? So if we say we want demolition of the old building, we want eight new classrooms, we want new library, new fitness, we want updates to the track and field, they can do all of that. If we don't say in the RFP that, yeah, we'd like to redo the track and field, and the community group later comes back and says, well, yeah, why aren't you thinking about the track and field? That's something we need to do. If it's not part of this process, it's hard, you technically can't change order that stuff out. So, the challenge here is making sure the public is aware that you're going to issue an RFP and it's going to be ideally on the higher end of what you want to try to achieve, with the understanding that it always gets scaled back and it can be scaled back without further action of the board. Which what's much harder to do is go the other way, get through the community group process and the scope, include something that we didn't include here. You can be a little vague at times, but generally, you know, if we're saying in this RFP, it's everything on this campus, but it doesn't say, or we might contemplate a new elementary school. You can put that in here, it doesn't mean they have to do it. It just gives you the flexibility for them to be able to do it if that's the direction you want to go. So that's another piece that I think Derek is very interested to know.
He's written.
We have to have that defined, as soon as it's defined, he can finish out this document.
Is it, is it fair to say though, Bob, that to a great degree, we already have the high-end scope done?
Great question. I would say yes.
Right.
We kind of did that with the study. We gave you the smaller version of, let's just knock down
Twenty building?
1920's building and let's replace eight classrooms. If that's what we put in the CM at-risk proposal, that's the scope that the CM would be authorized to do. If you go the other way and look at, we're closing the street, we're adding pavement to the parking lot, all of that stuff, while that's the grand wishlist, it's a starting point and it gives them the broader scope that we can then scale back. So that would be my recommendation is, you don't want to put out a CM at-risk RFP that limits your ability to go through the community group process and write size of bond to what the community will support.
Yeah, and it's, it's already been made quite public that we're spending $40 million. You know, so, I mean, and I, I'm not even sure if that was the actual number on the high end in the audit, but
Yeah.
it was pushing that, yeah. So, you know, you start there and then you prioritize down to 38, 35, 29, whatever, but... So Derek, Derek is anxious for that. He says that's, that, you know, can prioritize that and prioritize a potential date for your vote. And, you know, you've already talked about that, and to have made, I know, a definitive decision, it doesn't automatically have to be an action item either. It's just, okay, are we looking at a March or are we looking at a May? I think those are the two dates you were, you were kind of, maybe a little back and forth, Bob had talked about. Kind of benefit of this one, benefit of that one. But purely, you know, your decision, knowing that you've got to go back 90 days, that's when you're, you have to approve an exact amount, precise amount.
And I didn't ask Derek this question, but I would imagine, let's say, even if you started in this process and said, we're anticipating, you could keep it as simple as a spring bond election. You wouldn't have to pick the date. And give yourself a little flexibility then as a school board to decide when is the right time to run the bond. But he needs, he needs a range, something that is a definitive timeline. It doesn't have to say it's going to be March 12th of 2026, but if you said spring or in alignment with a general election, things like that. He just wants to know that the board has agreed, this is the process we're starting and this is the ultimate goal. And that needs to be reflected in the RFP.
So you kind of come to the conclusion that anything before that is not really feasible, right, with construction?
Yes. With, with the timelines that you have to follow by state statute, to get a CM onboard this year and be able to do something in November, I think you're pushing too fast. Because you're going to lose the value of the construction manager to be involved in the process and help scope out a budget. So, I would tell you, my recommendation is, March of 2026 is a comfortable timeline. That's probably the earliest I would recommend you try to run, maybe late February. It's sometimes up to the county clerk as far as if you say it's February or March, they pick the date. It's usually the second Tuesday of the month, just like you do other elections in May or November. But I wouldn't foresee with the process that's still ahead of you with a construction manager and in the process of trying to engage the broader community through the community group process, that's the earliest timeline I would recommend is March.
I think you might have talked about it last meeting, but that lines up okay with, you know, if you do get it passed in March or the spring, can you say again how that, you know, how that, when the construction process ends?
Right. So if you vote a bond in March and it passes the second Tuesday of March, we then start the earnest design process to get to a level of construction documents that a construction manager can bid through all the subcontractors. What we will have at the end of the pre-bond process is essentially schematic design. It will have the scope, you'd have a floor plan, you'd have some renderings, you would know the spaces, science labs, libraries, another competition gym, things like that. It would have the schematic program, square footage, but we wouldn't have building sections and electrical panel schedules, right? That's what starts in March. And from March through to, usually by the time we hit summer, June, July, with a CM onboard, the nice part is you can sometimes break out early bid packages for the early scopes, your concrete footings, your steel packages, or pre-cast masonry packages, things like that. It allows them to get footings in and get construction started in the same year. May, which is only two months later, but if I start that same process in May, instead of June, July, now I'm getting into August, September for those bidding timelines, to where you're starting to push up in Nebraska against, you never know what the weather's going to do. You get an early winter and the ground freezes, now you're going to spend extra money trying to thaw areas where you're trying to pour footings. It can be done, not that that can't be done, it's just, in my opinion, I like a March vote better than a May vote because it gets you ahead of the game pending any hiccups. You just, it's a more comfortable timeline for the construction manager to ensure that they at least get all the, all the early work done that they need before winter hits so that if we have footings in the ground and they're slinging steel in December, that's fine. Because steel is not temperature-dependent like masonry walls are or trying to get footings in the ground. Those are things that are more affected by the timing of the subcontractor bids, mobilizing on the site, getting the areas, you know, demolished that need to be demolished and then the new footings in place.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was the Wayne superintendent that said they very much were appreciative of the construction manager at risk. Wasn't it me, Wayne?
And, and they had a March vote, and we did do some early bid packages on their project to help them get ahead of the winter. You want to pull up the rubric?
Yeah.
So, just as another example, your selection committee, and you saw this in the RFP, it's just a slightly different format. This is what we would give to your selection committee. So when they need to rank proposals, every committee member gets the same sheet. They had slightly different, you saw Wayne had 5% for the first one, Pierce put 2.5% for their very first one, you know, the financial resources. So, you know, the first couple of lines are identical, that's state statute. That's what they tell you the criteria has to be. You have the flexibility in changing the numbers within a range. But their very last one, you can see, the ability and resources of the CM to recruit qualified contractors for the project, including but not limited to local contractors. That was something they felt was an important quality for a construction manager for their project. So they weighted that as 15% of the overall score. So you do have some flexibility in typically those last couple, one or two criteria that you want to set, but ultimately it has to add up to 100%.
How do you know for sure, Bob? I mean, I'm trying to hire a construction manager, very few of us have ever done that, so. The selection process and the interviewing questions, how do you know that you're doing it right? I mean, is there like a, something out there that you can give you? What the right questions to ask during the interview process?
Yes.
Yes, our, you know, administrative team, I work with Dr. Lanahan or I work with Mr. Christensen at Laurel or maybe, you know, whoever at Summerlin. So at an administrative level, a lot of consultation goes on. Okay, you know, the process and the conversations and so on, the board would probably do the same thing. And, and of course, you know, advice from Bob and such, but, you know, these, these numbers, you know, don't vary a whole lot. These are going to be very similar. Most of the language is exactly the same except for the bottom one to a great degree. And they don't vary a whole lot, I mean, he mentioned 5% versus 2.5, but so, but that is a good point. We haven't done this in 50 years, so we want to make sure we get it right.
But I do have resources that I share with the selection committee. Just like you said, is there kind of a predetermined set of questions that you can at least refer to and decide, oh, I like this question, I'm going to ask, you know. What do you do if, for example, you have a subcontractor who's not performing? What's your solution, right? That's one of 50-plus questions that, and I got it from Derek originally, so it's something he would share too.
We don't have to invent the wheel on it.
We will support you, that's why they keep the architect as part of the selection committee as well. Because I have been through, I don't know, 15 of these now, in my experience, so. It's something I'm used to doing and I will be there as a resource, Derek will be there as a resource. He's done even more than me. It's, it's something that is a standard, you can't go wrong because the state statute tells you exactly what you have to do. And Derek will give you, even down to, at the next meeting, when you say, or whenever you're ready to do the CM process and say, it's this timeline, it's this scope, it's these things, Derek will assist Darren with the board language that you need to adopt for this process. So it's not something that you have to invent, it's something that Darren will have, you know, the assistance of Perry Law to make sure you're doing everything accurately and by the book.
I think we'll have a couple of those action items at our regular July meeting. Just some procedural formal board action so that you can proceed, you know, legally to the next steps.
So this is, this is the board that comes up with this, correct, not the, not the selection committee?
Right. You define the guidelines, other than like I said, the first six are state statutes. But you define the percentages and you define what other specific criteria you want to add at the end.
So how many applicants do you think you'd actually get?
With your size, I, a minimum of six.
A minimum of six. Did you have 20?
I would not say you would have 20, okay, not.
Just wondering how much? How many are we going to have to squirt through, you know, how, I mean, how much work is it going to be through the selection process? How long is it going to take?
The selection process, you know, it's 30 days, once the RFP is published. I would say once you get the responses, you give the selection committee about a week. So if you get them on a Thursday, by the following Thursday, we want to have that scheduled. And we would try to set that up at the start of the process. When we issue the RFP, you should already have the selection committee identified and commit them to the date of, okay, July 19th, we get the books, we want to meet on July 26th as the first meeting. And even then to say, we're going to go the next week after that and do the interviews, right? It might be a little tricky, most of the CMs will tell you, if they're already submitting, they're already anticipating, what are we going to say in an interview? So to give them, I wouldn't give them any less than a week, but within a week's turnaround, if you meet on a Thursday, call them Friday morning and say, we'd like you to show up next Thursday, they'll come prepared, ready to interview.
But we wouldn't have 50 questions per?
No.
Per interview, if we've got six CMs, you know, we'd have anywhere from a dozen to two dozen?
For the interactive course?
Yeah.
A lot of times, when you get to the interview stage, you've narrowed it to three or less. And you do about an hour's timeframe for each interview. So it might be, we'll give you 30 minutes to present, we'll take 15 to 20 minutes for question and answer, and then you have like a 10-minute, 15-minute break in between so that the committee can at least debrief quickly, what did we hear? You need a restroom break before the next group, things like that. So, if you're going to do three interviews, it's a minimum of three hours of time commitment for that day to do the interviews. A lot of times, the questions that are on the sheet, the CMs will somewhat address as they go through their presentation. Even in the RFP, we give them criteria that says, you know, tell us who your project manager is going to be. Who's your site superintendent, who's your office manager, you know, who does your close-out process? Whatever that is, they're going to put in their resumes, they're going to put in their historical work of what other school districts. You know, what comparable projects have you completed? All of those things will come through the proposal. And a lot of times what I like to do is follow up, once we've made the selection of, here's the firms we want to interview. I'll try to lead them to say, you know, thank you for submitting your qualifications on the schools. Now we'd like you to expand upon some other items that maybe you didn't address in your proposal. You know, we might have given them an idea of the project's scope, but maybe we didn't show them all the options we're thinking of. We might ask them to expand upon, how would you phase it, right? It's an occupied school, we didn't see it in your proposal, but can you come prepared to talk about, how would you approach this project? Which part would you think should be the first, second, third phases? So there's things we can do to try to not make it where you're just repeating the same information, but learning new information and having the ability to ask follow-up questions. But no, I, typically within a 20-minute Q and A period, a lot of the selection committee will already have, have had a number of the questions that they might have highlighted to say, I want to hear this answer. A lot of times it comes out through the interview process.
How long was it between, from the interview process then to when you select who you want to be?
To make the recommendation to the school board? Depends how good a job we do with aligning dates, right? Ideally, we would want that interview process to be within a week or two of your next school board meeting.
And this is all going to happen between now and when? September 1st, or you have this done by September 1st, a CM selected?
You could potentially, so theoretical time. With all the information and resources that Darren has now and that we've kind of showed you tonight, we could put together a proposed RFP schedule that you could consider at your next July board meeting, right? So everything could be in place to say, at your July board meeting, here's the selection committee, here's the potential dates and timelines, here's the rubric. Those are the big pieces. You could have that ready to go to act on as a board. And then Derek would issue the RFP middle of July, you'd get them back middle of August. You would have your selection committee process that might take two weeks, so you're pushing towards the end of August. Maybe like you're doing this special board meeting, if you wanted to do a special board meeting at the end of August, to just consider CMs, you could, or you could wait till your September. I know September is the financial board meeting, so sometimes that's a busy meeting to begin with. But that's a potential time. So probably not by your August board meeting, that's a little, that would be too aggressive based on what we have to follow by state statute. But definitely by the end of August, your September board meeting, you could have all of this done, have a recommendation from the selection committee and act on, here's our first choice, let's... And it's not that you would sign a contract in September, it's that you would move for Darren and Derek to negotiate a contract with your preferred CM. At that point, you could say, let's fire up the community group process. Derek would tell you, he's still going to spend the next month finalizing the back and forth. I've done that on other projects. Usually, the number one ranked contractor stays the number one ranked contractor and you will get to a contract. It would be at their own risk for a CM to start meeting with us in a community group process without a contract. Generally, I would tell you, they're probably, depending on who the contractor is, that's probably not going to be a big issue for them. Because they're going to feel that we wouldn't have submitted and we wouldn't have gone through the interview process if we weren't committed to being a partner and working with you on this. So, they're going to want to get to a resolution as well. And if it, if it means keeping you on pace, so starting in September with a full-blown community group process, we could very easily get through that process by December, to where then you wouldn't be rushed in December to try to pass anything, you'd still... to where then you wouldn't be rushed in December to try to pass anything. You'd still have a month in there. I like to see the community group come to your December board meeting and make their recommendations. And then the school board would act at your January board meeting, which would allow a March bond vote. And if you said it wants to be May, that's fine. You just start counting the months backwards from there. So that's what I would anticipate. That's what we need to do. Yeah, it's, this is the next step, is the criteria, the timeline, and the rubric. Any other questions?
How many people are on that selection committee typically? I know you said there was a mix of people.
I would tell you a minimum of five.
Minimum five.
And probably no more than ten. It's school board members, you know, two, maybe three school board members. It's typically your superintendent, could be a principal or one other staff member. So if you have three, three board members, superintendent, principal, architect, and two community members, that's seven. And there is probably, if you scroll through this, Darren, there is, in the state statute, it lists those community members. In the Wayne's document.
They got a web page. How many pages are there? It's up there?
Slow down a little bit. It's after page fifteen, because this is the RFP. The next one is the, the actual criteria.
So the penises.
Yes, it's after that. Right here is where it starts talking. These are all the state statutes. Can't read that. We're going too fast. Evaluation.
Eric, I think it was, I backed up, or the makeup of the selection committee.
Yep, right there. Yeah, a group of at least five. Member or members, see, that's, they don't tell you how many school board members, just at least one. Member of the school district, administration and/or staff, representative of the school district's architect or engineer, a person having special expertise relevant to the selection of a CM. That's where I would say it could be a local plumber, electrician, tradesman, anything like that. And then just a resident of the school district other than an individual included in the previous poll. So a minimum of five, but you can add.
Let's see, did, did I share this document with you? Does this look familiar? Something, I mean, I mean, I'll push it out to you if you're curious about some of the different parts of it. Maybe, I mean, again, most of it is, is legal, but, but that would be helpful, obviously. That's a, you know, a piece that will follow.
Was this part of the example RFP that you emailed out?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't get through all of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, the, the first fifteen pages are really what affects you. Everything else after that is the state statutes or the proposed contract that would be included for the CMs to review.
So we need that for next board meeting then? We need that scope?
Yep.
And the timeline.
Yep, so I'll work with Derek starting tomorrow to make sure that we are ready for those decisions at the July meeting.
It sounds kind of like, you know, you just, you put it at the top of what, you know, that makes kind of the most sense. You can always pare it down. It's harder to go back up, so. You're going to go fast here pretty quick.
It's going to get real serious in a hurry.
And then with what Bob's saying about, you know, they could shoot for March for that election time. That works best with, you know, getting some construction, but if it passes that coming fall, so. We'd have to have that selection committee determined as well by next, next meeting?
It'd be nice. You don't have to, but it'd be nice.
Get it going pretty, pretty soon.
Because you want to be able to, when we set that schedule and say, here's when we issue it, here's when they're due, a week later, we want people to meet. It's nice to know that that, you'll be far enough out because that selection committee should be happening in August. But it's good to identify them at the start and then make sure they're committed and block that date, you know, two dates out with interviews.
And does your, your school board president essentially determine the selection committee?
You can. That's up to the board to decide how you want to delegate selection of those members. I mean, some of them, like the architect, is defined. That's, there's not much to select there.
There's only, yes, there might be three or four at-large selections.
Yes. Yeah, there's no wrong way to do that. If, if, if the school board would just say, yeah, we'd leave it to the president to pick, you can do that. If you want to have discussion and give yourself a list of people that you can ask. You know, I suppose you'll guarantee the first person on your list would say yes, but typically, this is a pretty easy sell or an ask for somebody to volunteer time for.
Board members could maybe make recommendations September and just trust his judgment. I mean, just, I'm just thinking of a, just a, so just get bogged down in some process to spend. We'll, we'll spend a lot of hours on other, probably more important things than.
And to Darren's point, the ultimate decision comes back to the board. The selection committee is just a mechanism to narrow the list, to make a recommendation back to the full school. And with members of the school board on that selection, you know, you guys can have those discussions.
Yeah, I guess you guys think about it. If, you know, you guys want to really be on this committee, let me know, or.
At what point do we start getting paid when we have these meetings?
You can't put a price on the satisfaction of moving the district forward for fifteen years.
Okay, so you have other questions?
August fourth.
August fourth. And how much?
Twenty-six.
Anybody from the group back there got any other questions you want to ask Bob?
It won't be your last chance. I'll be back.
Yeah, and we, you know, we certainly appreciate Bob's, you know, attention that he's, he's devoted to us in this process. Because if we decided tomorrow, I forget the whole thing, you know, Bob would say, well, it was nice working with you. And you move on to the next school. But anyway, I mean, it certainly helps. I, I know it just makes me feel more comfortable when Bob's in the room every step of the way. I mean, you should be on our selection committee. Is that legal?
Yeah, I have to be.
Oh, you're. Good. Come up with, yeah, come up with some questions for us.
Yep. Okay, that's, that's what I have to.
I have one, real quick. So with the construction manager, we kind of want our scope to be the largest possible scenario that could possibly be, and then you work your way down. Do we want them to, I mean, I don't know how familiar our, our group is with what we laid out in front of them that one night in the gym, what they've all seen, but I'd be curious if there's anything that we didn't have on there that anybody thinks is important to add. Because I'm not saying we're doing it all, but if there's something that's not on there and they want, they think that that's needed to get it on there.
Yeah, so that, that.
As a part of that scope.
The, the full scope schematic essentially came from our teacher interviews, our staff interviews, our folks that live here and work here. What do they see every day? But that's, I think, a great point. As we have site tours, not only will that help you prioritize, but we may see something that is, is not part of our scope. Probably not something, though, that's going to be a, an extra ten percent of, because what's on there will probably be scaled down to a certain degree and maybe offer an opportunity for an addition that wasn't on that initial audit schematic, but that, that is a good point.
As something to keep in mind, you know, get, get familiar with maybe that large-scale one. And if there's something that we're seeing, or you guys are seeing, that's, that's not there, maybe that needs to be included as it gets whittled down, because that can't be in there if it's not in the original.
Does it ever happen where, like, say, we, our big scope is forty million, when we actually get ready to do it, only pass a ten-million-dollar bond, does a construction manager ever be like, we don't want to mess with it for a ten-million-dollar project because I have a forty? Like, that doesn't happen?
No. If you went from forty million to two million, maybe, because that's a big reduction. But no, I would say, once you have a CM on board, all the CMs that I would expect to respond to an RFP, such as yours, are, are quality, good-character companies that want to be a partner to every school district they work with. I couldn't foresee any of them just walking away because I've got too much for them.
I would ask the board, just to clarify, because we, on the twenty-sixth, we're going to have a planned proposal community meeting. Are you really certain and you really think that having daycare attached, not done by the school, but attached to the school building, is a good plan? Is that in your thoughts?
As opposed to trying to build one somewhere else at the, at the site?
Because we, at this point, we've taken it out of the plans. It's about the sixteenth plan we've done now. And it really depends on whether you really think it's important to be with the school as compared to the community building. Do we need to pursue putting that back into our plans or not?
I would say no. I mean, we have teachers that need daycare, along with the community. Daycare is a major issue. But if we can have a three-year-old preschool here and we don't have to have a teacher that travels over there, if we can eliminate that, just that little bit of a problem and have that here, no, I would say you do not need to add it back to your community building project.
And so, at this point, it is a positive that you'll keep that?
I think you could ask, you could turn a one-eighty and ask this, that question.
Yeah, because if you feel it's important, it should come out of the community.
It'll ultimately be the board to say yea or nay, but if the community is overwhelmingly.
Community. I mean, we've done a lot of, probably, we could do one and the school could do one too.
Yes, a hundred percent, because, because school, schoolteachers might half fill up the one. But I, I, I bet if you read your community, right here, your group right here, that said, yeah, that's going to be, daycare's going to be a part of it.
For the school, for the school. For the school, yes? All raise your hand if you say yes, it's supposed to be part of the school. Those of you that don't know, just keep your hand out. All right.
Does that give you a sense? Take back to your planned proposal.
At this stage of the game, it's part of the facility audit. We have a room labeled daycare. So if that was the, the schematic plan that we include for the project scope, it would say daycare. And keeping it in now as part of the CM RFP means it's still an option. It could still get pulled back. It just can't get added in the future. So I think you start with it. It's already part of the facility audit as a need that was expressed by the staff. We have it in a plan. But a daycare room could very easily convert back to a standard classroom if the school decided, we can't do this anymore or don't want to do it.
I, I agree with you. Very important to have it, so the teachers don't have to go. That's a wonderful point to that. Well, and parents can come and pick up all, all of it, yeah, in one place. So maybe in a bar or anything like that. Okay, thank you.
Kitchen would be near the website as well.
What's that?
You'd have.
Kitchen.
You'd have access to the kitchen.
Wouldn't have to travel to that.
Bob, what if there was an election in March and it didn't pass? What's the timeline?
Six months before you could run another bond.
So that gives you time then to adjust your.
If you felt, okay, depends on the vote, right? If somehow you have a vote in March and it's eighty-twenty, no. We way missed the mark, which I wouldn't expect that to happen. If it was fifty-five, forty-five, and you're close, then you take that time to kind of engage the community again and say, outside of this selection committee, maybe do a broader survey. Well, what, what were the factors? What did you see? Were there things that you felt like a daycare that you just couldn't support? And then it gives you a chance to react, the school board to react, maybe adjust the bond. For those of you that went to Laurel, they asked Jeremy Christensen, the superintendent, because Laurel failed their first bond and then ran it again in six months, and they didn't reduce the scope of their bond. They actually slightly increased the scope, brought a little bit of the bond value down because they switched to a partial lease purchase. So the feedback they got from the community was, we, we think there is a need. We agree that there's a need, but we don't like that you're saddling us with thirty years' worth of higher taxes. We'd rather see you front-load it with a lease purchase, which lease purchase is limited to a maximum of seven years. So they identified a portion of the building to say, we're going to build this section with a lease purchase, which has a maximum seven-year timeline instead of thirty-year timeline. So the bond was front-loaded where, I don't remember the exact numbers, but let's say it was fifteen cents for the first seven years, and then it dropped to eight cents for the next twenty-seven years, right? And that passed the bond the second time around. They didn't cut any scope.
It actually got more expensive, didn't it?
It actually got a little more expensive. They also took the time to inform the public too of, if we can't pass a bond and we try to do all of these elements in seven-year increments with lease purchase, which a school board can do without a vote, you know, it would take fifty years to complete the whole plan. And instead of twenty million dollars, I think it was over fifty? Fifty or sixty? Yeah, it was a big number to say, if we have to try to do this, a piece at a time. And then by the end of that process, now you don't have one new building. You've got some of it that's twenty, thirty years old.
Are you doing part of the Crofton?
Yes, I'm involved in Crofton.
So they're on their third vote?
Wasn't involved in the first vote. I was involved in the second vote. And the third time around, the second time around, they didn't do a community group process. They felt they had already done that in the first time. So they did some surveys, but I think there was too much work at the high school and people felt they should focus at the elementary. That's what's happening this next time. They'll vote in September for Crofton. So we'll see. I, I feel more optimistic this time around than I did the second time around. But yeah, that's, they're on their third.
Crofton has a big wild card, though. All those houses that Y got.
The lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I have some good friends up there and that's what they say. But that really swings it one way or another. And you never know what they're going to do.
And they started at eighteen million. I think their first vote, the second one was just over twelve. And now they're down to about eight, seven or eight.
Can I ask, go back to daycare. How many schools in our area have a daycare in school?
Very rare, but, but many of them are talking about it, especially if they're looking at a construction project.
So you're talking from baby on to?
Yes, six weeks to graduation. For some people, that's a perfect solution.
And the school district pays for that?
Oh, no.
It's a separate thing. It's a manager.
Well, it depends on how you manage it. The school can manage it or the school, it's on the school's side, but it can be managed by, you know, somebody else. You know, you can lease the space and, or you can, you can hire somebody and, you know, pay that. There's a variety of ways to, to manage it. So yes, that would be a discussion. If daycare is going to be part of the scope of this project, there'd be another further discussion about, well, how do you want us to, to manage that? That, to us, that's not as important as, we, we want those kids as quick as we can get them.
And that's a discussion the community group can have. If you support the idea of a daycare that's convenient at the school but not run by the school, you can tell that to the school board.
Because I think your building of your room of your school is going to cost more than somebody getting a house. And I don't know, I could be wrong, but, right?
First quarter.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it depends. Depends on, depends on the house and how many kids and, you know.
Having it connected to the school also gives kids an opportunity to learn if that's what they want to pursue after high school. Having it connected to the school also gives kids an opportunity to learn if that's what they want to pursue after high school. If they want to go into early childhood development, gives them an opportunity onsite to figure that out.
Yeah, because we, we currently take our kids off-site to daycare, right? For kids interested in early childhood through our FCA.
And right now, where we offer Fridays for seniors, I mean, they're still on the property, and they still get paid for doing that, but it's kind of like having an intern. So it helps that daycare intern. Daycare is expensive. It costs, everything is expensive. But if we don't work together and put our heads to a bigger picture view here, like that's, that's what this community needs. We need to look forward to the future and what's coming down the line. How can we make people, young people, come back here so we build a school that these kids want to send their kids to? Or come back and work in Plainview to have, just to grow our community?
I'll just say, like, my concern with it is, maybe I'm wrong with it, but if, I don't know how many daycares are in town, but we'll just say there's three or four. I assume the people you'd want to run this would be someone that has experience like that. And then you're kind of just washing out. Then if, you know, say you take Haley down and take her, her house and move her here, did we really gain anything then with doing this?
I don't know that any one of them would want to do that. They already have an established business. Why would they want to do that?
And they have, they have waiting lists. I mean, those daycares.
The minute a woman finds out she's pregnant, she's got to find daycare for her unborn child.
Yep. That was the first one. We decided to move back to Plainview before we could decide to do that. We had to see if we could find daycare. Um, there's a waiting list with multiple daycares here. And maybe one of them is interested. Maybe they want to take their work and separate it from their home, you know? Maybe they want a place that they can go to until five o'clock and go home and not have it look like my house does, you know? That might be something, or maybe we have another one that wants to, to start their own daycare. There's, there's kids that would be there.
Daycares are highly regulated. You have to be able to pass health code inspections, which is even a little different than some of, you do as a school district with your kitchen, but the daycares themselves also have additional regulations and ratios of staffing per number of students per age range.
Darren, didn't you say that can be a positive with hiring teachers?
A, a hundred percent, yes. And, and retaining teachers. So from a, from a school perspective, you know, that's a huge advantage. So from a community perspective as well, so, yeah, there'll be, um, obviously some highly engaging conversations about if it's part of the scope and the scope passes, how will we manage that? Maybe that needs to be decided, you know, before the vote, I don't know. Um, but I don't know that necessarily.
Well, and if we know that's a concern of the community group, we have time to start talking to other communities that have that and see how they... Well, Laurel does, but it's a combination between the school and the city.
Random does a lot.
Random.
Random does.
So, I've been looking at it. They were trying to convert their old bus barn into a daycare facility. Skyler had a, had a grant at one point to do it. I think they ended up switching superintendents and not following it. There's, every school district that I'm working with, that question comes up at some point. What are other communities doing? How are they doing daycare? Can it be a part of this?
I wish Jeremy was here because he has the numbers, because we did the survey with CK for, uh, CK LA.
C-four.
C-four K, there it is. I'm thinking the LA stuff. But a lot of that is determining, like, how many kids, how many, how much daycare you have, how much daycare do you need? So Pierce is one of seven counties that's growing in the state of Nebraska. Uh, we had, I believe the number was, we had four daycares in town. So you max out at eight to ten kids. You know, that's forty kids. And we're talking about a daycare that would provide service for seventy kids. So that increases the amount of numbers that we want to do. Um, and we have the space for it too, because we have a lot of people that are on waiting lists and the people that we've talked to, um, I mean, I know Haley has tons of people on list and she's kicking people out, turning people away, just because she doesn't have the room for it, so.
Probably not licensed to take anymore.
Yeah.
And she had, I mean, she has to add people to help just to keep her license, so.
And then part of that survey was that the younger you start children learning, the better they are in the long run. So those managers are knowledgeable of that part of it too. It's not just feeding them three times and taking a nap in the afternoon.
I know it's an inconvenience, a minor inconvenience for our families who have to come pick up their preschool kids at eleven-thirty or bring preschool kids to us at noon. I mean, they all work it out thankfully, but I think if you asked all these young parents if they had a one-stop shop for a school, they would jump onboard in a heartbeat. And that's what they're looking for, is for us to help alleviate some of those transition times that they have to make in and out throughout the day for their kids. And, and there's a lot of transition time on our end. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts for us just to accommodate for our preschool. So knowing that preschool, daycare, kindergarten is all kind of in their one own wing of our building, um, the amount of time that that will save us in the long run is tremendous.
But won't there still be other daycares like in town scattered out?
Yes.
Are we going to like try to have a bus or something that takes kids to Haley's house or back or whoever else's daycare people?
That is an option that we could do, that we can talk about.
Yeah, that's all good discussion, so, things to talk about in the future.
No.
Thanks, Bob, for coming in.
Thank you.
Kareem gets in the hallway. He's going to stay a little longer.
Are you done with us, Mr. President?
Yes, we've got just a few action items we've got to do.
Thank you, everybody. I'll send you a notice about maybe Friday, late afternoon.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
They all walk slowly to the outside. I'll even circle this one.
How's that shelf going? In fridge? Shelf full.
Well, it's past nap time. Full REM, deep sleep.
I worked and worked and worked.
I listen to Losing My Religion.
The REM? Maybe you don't have to get up early somewhere?
There's no shelves in the fridge anymore.
I mean, either not too early. That's not too early. What time did you have to be out at asphalt last year?
My front tire has flattened since I've gone, and my back tire has flattened since I've gone.
As I say, I had to give her a ride home because her back tire was flat. I couldn't give her...
Yeah, we bought a YouTube today, but she's like, every time I go up to Schmidt's, I come back with a flat tire.
It's funny.
Keeps the hot seat kids away.
Throw on hot stickers. Not the sticky kind either.
Welcome, birthday. I want to get out. You got a dictation. Hey, wait a minute. It's not going well. It could fail. We're not going to... I don't, and, and that's... Yeah, your daycare is a whole preschool and teach your kids.
Yeah, there's three or four of those ladies who aren't employed by us yet.
Okay, everybody back? Number ten, discuss the possible action on a school bus, previous possible school bus purchase.
Okay, this was going to be a, a topic of interest anyway, uh, before I had, uh, before I had a, uh, a webinar, uh, with the transportation folks at NDE. We have to phase out our white van, uh, no longer acceptable to transport kids. Uh, and that van is, was getting to its end of usefulness anyway, um, so that's okay. Uh, so, uh, an activity vehicle van or a, or a short bus for, for route have both kind of been in the, talking for the past many, many months with Bob. Um, we've got money and vehicle acquisition for this budget cycle. Definitely put some more in for you to consider next budget cycle, but, um, but we've got a, we've got a, a eleven-passenger activity van that has to go away. Uh, we've got a little bit of a grace period.
Why does it have, what's?
Because nine is the most we can haul now.
You can't haul?
Yeah. Uh, new rule came from, from the feds, uh, so schools are starting to scramble a little bit. We've anticipated this a little bit, but it, it's fine. So schools are starting to scramble a little bit to get rid of, I'm, I'm glad that we don't have a newer eleven-passenger. Uh, or we have to retrofit it. We'd have to pay to retrofit it, which you can do down in Kansas. You've got to send it to Kansas and the guy is a second-stage manufacturer authorized to do that. Um, you know, or, uh, fourteen-passenger vehicles are becoming pretty popular, pretty popular. So you're familiar with a short bus. Short bus is just be a yellow, right? Uh, fourteen-passenger yellow bus, gas-powered, uh, no CDL required. The rest of it are just specs, you know, that, that I don't know or care, worry too much about. But the main things I talk about with Bob are, I, 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 very hard to find drivers to get a CDL, uh, hard to find route drivers, um, hard to find a, uh, you know, if we got to take vans, got to have two drivers. And oftentimes, if it's an activity, we've got two coaches. That's generally not incredibly complicated. But a fourteen-passenger, that would probably, more than half of the time where we have to take two vans, they could probably go in one fourteen-passenger, right? So, uh, so we've kind of been talking, uh, got information from a variety of, of different vendors of vehicles. Um, so we talked and we wanted to bring to the transportation committee, you know, two, two different options. One would be something to replace our activity van, which has to go away. This is a fourteen-passenger activity bus, uh, with, uh, you know, a little more room than a short bus. Looks about the same, just it's white instead of yellow, but it's configured slightly differently. Same amount of passengers, same requirements to drive. And, you know, I mean, and, and it's new. It's not a used model. It's a new model. And they're about as expensive as a full-size bus was just five years ago. I mean, they're, they're pricey. I think this is a hundred, a hundred and eight, a hundred and eight thousand. So, you know, Bob and I talk, I mean, we've got a guy holding two of them for us. We've got a guy holding a, a yellow and, and this one. Uh, I don't know how long he'll hold them. Uh, as I mentioned, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask the board to, to approve vehicle acquisition in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle. Um, we've got enough, uh, we've got five buses, five full-size buses. We drive three en route. On any given day, two of those have fourteen or less kids. Now, that doesn't mean we'd automatic, that we need to replace them. We can, we can take a full bus. We can take a fifty-three passenger with, with twelve or thirteen or fourteen kids. We, we do just about every day. Um, but we're going to be in a position to maybe need a route bus. This can go en route. It just, it has to pull in the driveways. It can't stop on the road.
But the yellow one can.
The, the yellow one, the, the yellow one can because it's going to have a stop arm. This doesn't have a stop arm. So they both can do both. An activity bus can do route and it can do, it can go pure activities. And then obviously a yellow, a short yellow, uh, you can also use those for activities, obviously. So, you know, we, 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 we want one of each, one in each, uh, budget cycle potentially. Pull the trigger now. I'm going to ask you to pull the trigger now on, on one of them. This is the one we're, we're recommending. Uh, and then potentially, if he'll hold on to a short yellow, um, we're, we're, we're kind of in the market, you know, for one of those as well, but...
What kind of fuel does this take? Is it diesel?
Bob thought, uh, maybe up to twelve?
Gas.
Oh, gas.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're staying away from the diesel.
Yeah, staying away from diesel. So this is gas-powered, no CDL required.
So like a diesel, if you get a diesel in here, talk about ten to fifteen thousand dollars just for the engine upgrade.
Plus the death conditions and stuffs.
So these are pretty hot now, short buses, um, and for activity buses, because they put, again, they put fourteen in them, no CDL, versus a transit van like our red one, our big red one, nine, no CDL. Uh, obviously it's got a little better gas mileage, but we, we rarely can get anybody around in a nine-passenger van. Uh, any, any type of activity, any type of team. So, um, we'd ask you to, to consider this, uh, because we'd like to get it here ASAP. Um, again, I've got a grace period on our white one. Uh, they haven't given us a drophead date. I might not find that till I go to Carney for my administrative meetings in July.
How many miles does your white van have on it?
A hundred and... A hundred and ten. One-ten, two-to-two.
Some value there?
Yes. So we had, we would think, Melissa, that we would keep it, pull all the seats out of it and use it for cargo. Uh, band instruments, football equipment, um, just can't haul kids in it, but I think we can keep it. Well, I mean, that would be my recommendation, is to keep it, because it will still get up and down the road. We just can't put kids in it and go up and down the road.
Can you put staff in it if you just go somewhere?
Yes. Just can't put kids in it.
Okay. What was budgeted in, I know we've been talking about it for...
Just, just seventy-nine. So this is more than was budgeted, um, but it's in the general fund, which, uh, the general fund obviously has our, you know, uh, ninety percent of our entire budget is in our general fund, which is...
What was the complete cost?
A hundred and eight. And there's a, let's see, prepaid discount of twelve hundred bucks, so, I mean, it's over a hundred, a hundred and five, a hundred and six.
Were you planning on a regular used bus at that eighty thousand or...
Well, that's what we paid for our last used one, so that was just a figure I had in my head, yeah, in, um, yeah. In hindsight, I should have known that wouldn't be enough to... Now, with my used transit van, we've, we've got a lot of options for, because schools are turning in their, their ten-plus transit vans rather than, uh, uh, take them to a second-stage manufacturer and reconfigure them down to nine, like, just get rid of them. So they're try, there's, there's a glut of reconfigured ten-plus transit vans, ten-plus passenger transit van.
But those kids still only home at nine?
You can only home.
If you buy them back, it'll be a nine-bus.
You, you can. You just got to pull them right away. Yeah. You can take kids home and anybody, but you just can't stop on the, just can't sell them room.
So, from what I understood, these can both go in around, the yellow and the white. They can both go around. This has to pull in the driveway. The yellow can stop on the road. This one would probably be more tailored towards activities. It's another twenty or thirty inches long and has five rows, the same amount of seating. So it's probably got, it's probably got more space in it for gear, you know, when you travel anywhere with kids and all their gear. I mean, they don't just have a cooler, it's backpack, a double bag cooler, plus fourteen kids. Um, other than that, they're about the same. This is maybe a little more spacious, maybe more comfortable.
It's designed for equipment, not just a backpack.
Activities.
Yeah.
And so we'd be looking at this yellow possibly for the next route.
I think that's what Bob and I will ask you to consider in the next budget cycle. So as we work on budget, uh, coming up pretty quick here, the forums just came out, so I've started on already. I think that's right, what Bob and I will ask you to consider in the next budget cycle. So, as we work on budget, uh, coming up pretty quick here, the forums just came out, so I've started on already, and I'm, we'll, we'll, I'm sure have a, uh, budget workshop in July. We'll try to set a date for that, uh, to July meeting, um, we'll, we'll probably budget well over six figures for another vehicle.
The CDL, I mean, imagine junior high basketball, whatever, we're gonna be shuffled back and forth now.
The bowling team.
Yeah. Well.
Yeah.
Bowling, we can send it to Minnie, Ben is depending on. Be honest. Yeah, yeah, it won't be 14. So this will take most of any kind of junior high.
So I already, so I disagree with the other two. I think we need to buy two yellow ones instead of one white one and one yellow one, because the yellows are interchangeable, you can stop. You're giving up a little bit of space, it's all for your savings, $6,000.
Who's the other person who submitted?
Upstairs.
What is the cost of the yellow one?
Hundred and two, $6,000.
And then I guess I personally don't wanna give a bunch of phone calls because we have another activity bus, we already have the pirate, the big pirate bus, you know?
But we're losing that van, that's the thing. We're losing that activity van. Set be replacing it, so. In my head, I'm fine with one of both eventually, or get, get this one just for the space, because I, I've sat in those vans when we put 10 kids in them and they're just, you can't see their faces because they've got so much gear and a little bit more space, I'd be okay with that. I'm a coach though.
See, I would be okay with this one. I just wish they would make this one, this exact model, just put the frigging stop sign and a little deal on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, is that even an option? Like, did anybody ask them?
I haven't seen one, and I don't think we'd wanna put that kind of money into turn it into a, into a route vehicle as well that can stop on the road.
I like what you say, you know, you do have a little extra room, it's, it's used for activities and that extra room.
Makes a difference, I mean, I figured out the specs were, but that one's bigger. It's the same amount of passengers, but it's bigger.
Just, here, it's a smart question. They don't make a yellow one, same dimensions as the white one?
He hasn't offered it.
He hasn't offered it?
Yeah.
Right, it's like gives us everything, that would all frame us. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
We'd have one of each.
One each.
They're same make and everything.
Yeah. It's just, this one has a little bit longer chassis and it has an extra row seating, so instead of, it'll just be like three kids across, it must be like two kids across, it's an extra row for all of them or something.
I'm probably gonna ask it in two months to approve it, the other one.
So in you and Bob's mind, you'd like one of each in a perfect world?
Yeah, just please.
If these run the routes, then we'll be cheaper in the long run, right?
Well, just gas mileage essentially. So if you're running the short bus, number one, you'd get, you, I, I don't need a CDL to put somebody on the route.
Well, yes, I understand that, but as far as fuel mileage and things like that, the short bus on the.
Eight, eight to 12.
I don't know what those big diesels get, the old diesels get. Price, yeah.
So if I'm not saying.
This, it's.
This is probably a little better, but.
Oh, you get up faster, the better the winner, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be better.
We're gonna have air conditioning in the summer, it's hot.
It'll be better for them.
You know, you're gonna have warranty on this, the brand new, so, for fair costs, nothing, anyway, use for a while, anyway, so, either one of these, goodbye. I guess it, our, our transportation manager, Bob, wants the white one, I say give him the white one.
It's all key to our teachers and.
Yeah. Yep.
I think it's for that extra room, it might be all right. If you buy the yellow one for the same dimensions, I'm all for that.
Yeah, same.
But it probably wouldn't be getting used for a route and, and all that.
This one.
No, I'm fine with it not being used for a route, I just think it would be.
Yeah.
It would be, it's like, to me, it's always better to buy something that has two purposes rather than just one.
Yep.
Or can be used as a.
Which it can, yeah.
And it could be, if, if, if in the weird instance it did get used for a route, it could, it's gotta pull in the driveway, right? That's the thing.
And that's just a reuse quite a bit, the quiz bowl also.
Oh, man, those vans are everywhere, and this is just gonna be replacing that white van, it's gonna go everywhere.
108,000. Total was, right?
Yep.
108.
Is that after the?
I think a $1,200, I think you just say not to exceed.
Okay. I see 108,000. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of. 14,000. Microbird activity bus, gas version, the amount of 108,000.
I'll second.
Microbird, would you say? Microbird activity bus.
Gas.
Right there, like, 2025 Microbird activity bus, 14 passenger bus. Okay, then it's been moved to second to.
Yeah.
Approve the purchase of a 2025 Microbird activity 14 passenger bus, not to exceed 100, 108,000 dollars. Okay, uh, we'll vote, myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Kayden?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, four to one. Uh, number 11, the choir risers, to be replaced, you got a replacement for them?
Yep, so I sent you some details on those, um, uh, that, yeah, the, the ones we have are rickety, um, they don't have any, um, guard rails on the side or the back. Had them for, I, I, I mean, I don't know, I'll leave that, I could say 10 years, I, they could be 20 years, I don't know, but, uh, when, when my music teachers mentioned at the variety show that their next fundraiser was to get choir risers, I, I, I blurted out, no, the school will buy you choir risers. You don't need to do a fundraiser to have, to be able to perform. You know, it's a necessary piece of equipment. So, the, these are, uh, you know, they're not replacing what we have, we could have got what we have, just ones that have two wheels and the kids lift them up and then they put them where they go and then they drop them. You know, so that these stack up and have, and then, and easily, uh, assemble, uh, into a three-step riser, and then they have guardrails all around. So this is for five of them, and they'd be configured as you can envision, um, could have two, could have three, could have four, could have five, but, uh, they'll fit behind the stage, take about the same space as the junky ones we have now.
Are we getting rid of those or are we keeping them or?
They're not good for one of them.
Do you want them for the difficulty in household?
No. They're, I, I wouldn't, they, nobody would buy them, I mean, if I tried to sell them to another school, you know, because schools are.
I, I have no idea what captured you.
Yeah, they're, they're not good, they're, 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 they're bendy and rickety. You, you, you kind of hook them into each other and so they, they stabilize each other just a little bit.
And we have the money for the budget, right?
Yes.
This isn't, this has come out of the activity fund or something?
Yeah, uh, no, this would be out of construction, so it's, it's for a curricular, I don't know, like a band choir.
So they move a lot easier than the old ones.
Yes, so you don't have to bend down and pick them up and drive them. They're kind of, they're, they're stacked up, I think you have a picture of how they kind of stacked up.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of new choir risers in the amount of 12,956 dollars and 16 cents.
I'll second.
Second to approve the new choir risers in the amount of 12,956, 16, well, Melissa?
Yes.
Chance? Yes. Kayden?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yeah.
I still have a few guys. Motion carried, five to one. And number 12, uh, we got a bid on that steel structure for the video board and scoreboard. It's like, to me, it's a good thing we're doing this, otherwise that scoreboard's probably going flat.
Yeah.
Everybody saw the pictures.
Yeah, so it was, uh, not what I anticipated when I went back there to inspect, you know, the space that we had and, um, you know, what it, what the security of the structure looked like, so. Yes, it was, it was worse than I anticipated, so, I mean, we, we, we had to replace it, whether we had something new anyway. Um, so, this, this steel will obviously support the existing scoreboard, any future scoreboard, the video board, any future video board, um, and so it'll just be a, a little more of a, uh, obviously stability. Uh, probably can go a little higher with it.
Longevity.
Um, yeah, it'll be there for the next whatever.
Do we have concrete footings down there that it's gonna go on or?
Uh, they'll, I'm sure they'll put new concrete footings.
Because it says that's not included.
No, they, this is just for the steel, so, it's not for your concrete, it's not for your install, uh, this is just for the steel.
Can we have an idea of who will put it in for us?
Uh, we're still working on it. In fact, we might take some, some good ideas from, from you guys on, you know, uh, who might have that expertise, but, yeah, we'll, we'll have that expense too, because we'll wanna, it's a different, it'll be a different animal than, than what we've got, and I don't know who maybe did ours back in the day, but wouldn't surprise me, just some, some good folks. Uh, it's, you know, a couple of six by sixes that are, you know, about 14 feet high, um, and just, you know, you can, you, you, anyway, you've got pictures of that. Uh, this'll be a whole different.
Honestly, those pictures, um, between the greenhouse surviving the wind that blew the roof off the school and that scoreboard is pretty amazing, that those two survived that in the storm and the roof.
That greenhouse was built really, really good. I helped build that, make sure. Type of order. Exactly.
Coralwood.
I'm shocked that it's.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of steel to be erected to support the football track complex scoreboard and video board in a 14,335,56 cents.
I'll second it. It's been moved to second to, uh, approve the purchase of steel to be erected to support the football track complex scoreboard and video board in the amount of 14,335,56. Vote, myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
And Melissa?
Yes.
All right, I think we're through everything. Next board, next board meeting.
Fourteenth of July.
Fourteenth, everybody overboard, was happy with seven, get done with the ball.
We're all done, yep.
It's not gonna be.
Okay, I'm not seven anymore.
I would rather.
Oh, 14th, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Mondays are like not good for daycare until like, until after the Christmas kind of fair.